All right, it is Monday, March 7th, 2022. It is 6:00 PM and I call this workshop of the Lewisville City Council to order. We have a quorum. Just a quick reminder, of course, all of these new lovely microphones are amazingly good at picking up audio, so if you don't want to be heard, you probably don't want to talk around them. Other than that, we'll go ahead and move forward with the work session. Let's go ahead and look through the regular agenda items and consent agenda items, council. If you have any questions or comments about these items, we'll just go through them real quick. Item D, the consent agenda. Item 1. Item 3. Questions on item 5? Questions on item E11? With that, we will go ahead and drop into workshop session, item B. Research, study, and report findings concerning adverse secondary effects of sexually oriented businesses in a review of proposed changes to city ordinances regulating sexually oriented businesses. We have Police Chief Kevin Dever and Assistant Police Chief Chris Clements here to present the presentation. That was kind of Department of Redundancy, wasn't it? Assistant Chief? How are you, sir?
Doing well.
Doing well, thank you.
It's coming.
There we are.
Chief Clements, can you get closer to the mic? We can't hear you as well. Thank you.
Every mic but that one.
Okay, is that better?
Yes.
All right, perfect. So, the purpose of the city ordinance, the research that I've done along with the city attorney, state law changes, our proposed changes, our recommendation, and then the references that you all have been provided. Our current definition of sexually oriented businesses, I'm going to refer to them as SOBs in this whole thing. It's easier to say. So, SOBs, shaman and adult arcade, adult bookstore, adult video store, cabaret, adult motel, adult motion picture theater, adult theater, escort agency, nude model studio, or sexual encounter center. That's our current definition. Some of the updates that we'll go through will add to that definition. So currently, the way we regulate SOBs in the city, our ordinance requires that they be licensed, require that they adhere to the rules and laws in our city ordinance and the Texas state statutes, and it does not restrict hours of operations. The Texas Alcohol Beverage Code also does some regulation of SOBs. It focuses on hours of consumption, and then the activities at licensed establishments that are actually licensed by TABC, but it also does not restrict hours of operation, only hours of alcohol service. So, the purpose of our SOB licensing ordinance, the purpose is to promote the health, safety, morals, and general welfare of the city of Lewisville, to establish our reasonable and uniform regulations of SOBs, and to minimize secondary harm inside or outside of SOBs. It does not intend to restrict First Amendment rights, does not intend to restrict or deny access to adults, and does not intend to restrict distributors or exhibitors of sexually oriented entertainment or their market. So really, our goal is not to limit their First Amendment rights, but to promote the safety of the citizens and to minimize secondary harm that occurs at SOB sites. So these are some outlines of the research showing the negative secondary effects that occur at SOBs. So first, the SOBs create an increase of crime in the immediate area regardless of the location, that's in the city or in rural areas. Increase in crime around an SOB extends a significant distance into surrounding areas. The victimization risk is more prevalent during nighttime hours, and the increased crime rate in areas surrounding SOBs requires an increase in police presence and resources. Ambient crime risk can increase by as much as 100% or more in an area where an SOB operates and opens. Specifically, SOBs pose large statistically significant ambient public safety hazards in terms of prostitution, drugs, assault, robbery, and vandalism. And property values are also negatively affected in areas surrounding SOBs extending for a significant distance into those areas. So part of regulating SOBs helps mitigate these secondary effects. You know, since they're licensed, we're able to know who is operating these establishments, who their points of contact are, but also they have to submit to inspections and those kind of things. So being able to regulate with a license is important to keeping the secondary effects out of the neighboring areas. This is a partial list of the references used to research all of these SOB-related items. I believe they were already provided to the council prior to the meeting. Moving on to the Dallas police study, so Dallas PD studied their crime rate at their SOB locations in their city and looked at their secondary crime effects, and they looked at the years 2019 to 2021, and they broke them into two categories, 10:00 PM to 2:00 AM and 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM. And the Dallas study showed that there was an increased use of police and fire department resources and an increase in violent crimes and nuisance crimes at their SOB locations. What's significant here is Dallas has 38 licensed SOBs, so if you look at the crime stats there, there was almost 12,000 police calls for service at these locations for a two-year period. A little over 2,000 of them were between 10 and 2, and then the rest, 2396 were between 2 and 6. So there's quite a bit of an increase just for those partial hours. And then the fire calls for service, again, they almost doubled from 2 to 6, instead of from 10 to 2. Just kind of digging into those crime stats, so gun and drug arrests as a percent of total arrests at the SOB locations, a little over half were between 10 and 2, and then over 60, about 63% were between 2 and 6. The violent crime increase they had, those are robberies, assault, sexual assaults, and murder. 67% of all reported violent crime at SOB locations was from 2 to 6. And then 2021 had a 76% violent crime rate reported at SOB locations from 2 to 6. So as a result of all that, Dallas City Council updated their SOB ordinance to include hours of operation. So Dallas requires their SOBs to close between 2:00 AM and 6:00 AM. Dallas isn't the only one. Fort Worth also requires closures of SOBs. There's a little different than Dallas. Plano, Frisco, those cities are more similar in size and fairly close. They also restrict SOB operating hours. And then Grand Prairie, El Paso, and San Antonio are the other Texas cities that have hours of operations restrictions on SOBs. Also part of this update to the statute, or excuse me, the city ordinance was Texas Senate Belt 315 became law on September 1st, and it requires SOBs that they can't contract or employ anybody under the age of 21. So currently, our city ordinance does not follow that law, so that's one of the updates that's going to be recommended. And then lastly, the Texas Local Government Code, Chapter 243, allows municipal governments to regulate SOBs by violations of our city ordinance be prosecuted as a Class A misdemeanor instead of a Class C misdemeanor, which currently our city ordinance does not allow for that. It only punishes it as a Class C misdemeanor. So the proposed changes to our SOB licensing ordinance, first is be update the definitions and regulations, amend certain age requirements to 21 to comply with the new state law, establish hours of operations for SOBs, so require them to close from 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM. This is consistent with TABC licensed establishments at the 2:00 AM mark, and then also consistent with our other jurisdictions that we saw on the other slide. And then amend it to amend the penalty to a Class A misdemeanor in accordance with our local government code, Section 243.010. So next steps in staff recommendation, based on the research study and report findings previously provided to council and discussed today, and to minimize the negative secondary effects, staff recommends that the city council adopt the ordinance as set forth in item number 11 on this agenda.
Does anybody have any questions? Thank you, Chief.
I have a question. I'm not sure who is the right person to ask. It might be you, it might be Liz. So if the state prohibits anyone under 21 to be employed by an SOB, would it not just be as easy for us to say, just say that the state law, we're going to, our ordinance is going to abide by whatever the state law requires for age limits?
Correct. I mean, regardless of what our ordinance said, we have to follow the state law. We just changed it because it was in there, and it just tracks the ordinances that have been upheld under court review, but we could change that.
Okay. I was just wondering if by some chance they change it at some other point, then we don't have an ordinance that's out of date again, and so we don't have to keep chasing them if we just refer to state law, then we're covered.
We could do it that way. You'd have to make a motion on item 11 to change that language.
Okay.
I get where you're coming from. I just, there's a lot of other things that could change in state law that might have us coming back to this ordinance, so they may change the type of misdemeanor that it would be, or some other language, so I don't know if it makes much difference.
The other thing I would add to that is, we're going to be bringing this back along with the code overhaul as well in the future, so we can tighten that up if you, if that's the...
I'm just, I'm just looking for the easiest way to do it, and so if we have to follow state law anyway, I'm just wondering if it might be cleaner to just refer to them and that, I mean, if we're updating it because we're not consistent with state law, it seems like the easier solution to fix that from happening again is just to refer to the state law. But if it's easier right now to just approve it as we've, as we're proposing it right now, I'm fine with that, too.
Whichever. Other questions?
I have a question. Dallas is at 6:00 AM, but the other ones that are close to us are 10:00. Are we doing, Liz, is this so we can stay tied to the TABC regulations? That we're doing the minimum of 6:00 AM? On the times, closing times?
We were piggybacking off of the Dallas study.
Okay. So we know that's already been upheld.
Well, no, they just changed it.
Oh, okay.
But that study linked it to the hours that we're proposing.
I'd like it closed a lot longer, but it's just me.
I don't think you get to do it from 12:00 AM to 12:00 PM.
Well, now, there is one in there on Sundays to 12:00 PM.
There you go.
Or between 2:00 and 12:00.
Got to have some time for the Lord's Day.
Quit, 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 quit. I'm good.
All right, other comments, questions? All right, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next up for the workshop, the code overhaul update. Presenting will be Director of Planning and Zoning, Mr. Richard Lidke, and Planning and Zoning Manager, Michelle Berry.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Planning staff is pleased to be here tonight to give you an update on the code overhaul project. This project really involves a complete rewrite of all of our developmental related ordinances, particularly our zoning ordinance and our subdivision ordinance. The zoning ordinance dates back to 1971 and has received, or underwent numerous minor amendments over the last 50 years. Subdivision ordinance was rewritten in the late 80s, and the result of that was the GDO, General Development Ordinance. It also has received quite a few minor amendments over the years. So with that, I will turn it over to Michelle Berry, our planning manager, and she will give you an overview of the new Unified Development Code that'll be coming before you here in the near future. So with that, I'll turn it over to Michelle.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Let me get this presentation pulled up for you all. All right, so I want to just kind of go over the process to date. I know a lot of you were part of the discussions, whether it was on council or on Planning and Zoning Commission at the time, but I know we have another council member that is new, so I'm going to give just a brief overview of the process, and then I'm going to go through the major changes that we're making, kind of based on the goal that we set for those changes, and then finalize with our next steps, and then also answer any questions that you may have. But feel free to ask questions throughout the presentation. So just as a reminder of the process, we did have numerous groups involved, including our consultant team, which was Kim Lee Horn, Karen Walls, and Phyllis Gerald. We also had our Staff Code Review Committee, which was our key development staff from our various departments, including public services, engineering, building, planning, parks. They were all giving input fairly regularly on various aspects of the code. In addition, we had a group of outside professionals, our Technical Advisory Roundtable, and these were developers that regularly work in Lewisville. It also included engineers, landscape architects, and architects to give their perspective on our ordinances as they were working with them from a different point of view, and that way we got the private sector side and the industry side. In addition, we did have open meetings that were open to all stakeholders in Lewisville, whether you're a resident or a property owner, and we had input from our Planning and Zoning Commission and our city council at several key points in the process as well. So the way that the process worked is we went through this flow chart twice. We went through this flow chart once for our zoning ordinance, and then once for what is our subdivision ordinance. The goal at the end of the day is what's considered a unified development code, where it's all brought into one document. So the first thing we did is we had diagnostic meetings. Our consultant team worked with us to come up with some draft directions and ordinances from there. That went to our Staff Code Review Committee. We took that then to our outside technical advisory committee, then to joint workshops with the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council, back to our Technical Advisory Roundtable to follow up with them so that they understood what the council direction was at that time. Then we sent that back to the consultant for revisions. We went to our community open houses and input sessions. Several of those planned open houses did have to be moved virtual due to the COVID pandemic, but we did still get some good input and some survey responses through those virtual public open houses. We then went back to the Code Review Committee and to the consultants to prepare the final ordinances. Those have gone through legal review, and I'm currently finalizing changes based on that legal review before we take it back to P&amp;Z and City Council for our final adoption. So going through what our goals are, we had kind of six main goals that I'm going to talk about, streamlining our processes, making Lewisville more pedestrian and bicycle friendly, making Lewisville more green, making Lewisville more affordable, which has been a more important goal as time has gone on and the housing market has changed fairly rapidly, making compatible development easier to do with flexibility for infill design, and that's based on the fact that Lewisville is about 94% built out, so we have very little greenfield development left. What greenfield development we have left, property that's never been built on before, is challenging due to easements, topography, or some other kind of constraints, generally speaking. And then lastly, we wanted to clarify and update our engineering standards. So going back to our processes, what we want to do is make sure that we have simple and clear processes that reduce the need for variance requests. This is a more efficient use of both staff and council time, as well as more expedite processes for the developer, which saves them time and money. So it's generally beneficial for everyone, so we wanted to streamline those processes and make them more clear and a little bit more flexible, given the fact that we're working with infill development, which generally requires more creativity. So we, part of this streamlining is assembling this all into a general development ordinance, so it's all, or Unified Development Code, so it's all in one spot. So everything that's related to development, and what you can build on a property, and what you can do, is in one place, and that just makes it easier to find what you're looking for. We can cross-reference within the sections and between the sections just to make it easier. So we'll go through a lot of the sections that we currently have in our zoning ordinance and in our subdivision ordinances, our general provisions, our definitions. We'll talk about our development and zoning procedures. We'll talk about our relief procedures, non-conformities, and how those would be addressed. We'd go through the zoning districts. We'd go through our use and parking requirements, and I'll show you those in a little bit. We'd go through our design and development standards, which are related to landscaping, screening, parking, et cetera, our public and private improvements, which are more the traditional subdivision regulations, more of your engineer standards, and then also our park development regulations. So one thing we've done is we've made a table for our use chart, which also includes parking. This makes it easier to see which in each possible zoning district, and it shows whether use is permitted by right, requires a special use permit, or is not permitted. It also includes our parking requirements, and that's just an easy frame of reference for a developer or someone looking to lease a place. It also has a spot to reference if there's any special requirements associated with a particular use type, so that the applicant then knows, I need to go look at this section because this will be applicable to me, and it's not just kind of floating in the back of the code, and they don't know it until they come talk to staff. So this is a sample table, and so you can see, it's kind of difficult to read up there, there's kind of a lot on it, but you could follow the line duplex over, and you could see that's allowed in OTMU1 and OTMU2, but there is this Article 7 here, so let me go reference that and make sure I'm catching all the standards that are applicable to a duplex, and here's the parking standard that I need to follow. So hopefully that makes it a little bit more simple for people, and they can find the information they're looking for easier and faster. We also wanted to streamline our development review flow chart and process, so we've updated those. We've generally revised them to be for a unplatted residential or commercial subdivision versus one that was previously platted, just to give people a little bit more context there. We've also tried to identify everything that would fall underneath the 30-day shot clock for a review that's required by the state. We've looked at these processes, and we've wanted to simplify them. We've also talked with council previously about delegating some review authority down to our other boards and commissions, primarily the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff where it's appropriate. A lot of that delegation is based on what we've been doing with the I-35 overlay and administrative modifications and alternative standards, so we're weaving that in generally throughout our code. So for example, the Board of Adjustment stays mostly as it always is with appeals to district courts, but if we're giving some more authority to staff, there is a possibility that they can appeal that to the city council if we make a decision that they're unhappy with. We wanted to make sure there was a process for appeal in place. Same thing with our engineering standards. We've made this so the city engineer is capable of granting an administrative modification for a thorough fair engineering design standard. The engineering team is really the expert on those engineering standards and the best ones to weigh in on those, but if one is denied, the applicant still does have the ability to appeal and take that request to the city council. So alternative standards, staff can grant up to 10% of any numerical standard or anything else that's listed in the code. If it goes beyond 10%, it can go to the Planning and Zoning Commission, up to 25% for landscaping or 60% for things other than landscaping, and that tracks with the I-35 overlay ordinance. And after that, it would go to city council. So city council would see all those changes that are over 25% for landscaping, 60% for our other standards, or any appeals of those administrative modifications that are delegated down to the planning director or city engineer. Another large change is we've added a two-step site plan process, and this may seem counterintuitive when we're trying to streamline our ordinances, but I'll explain why we think this is a really great idea. First of all, we're not requiring it for all projects. If it's a small project or perhaps a simple project, it's a 20-acre site with one large warehouse building, the concept plan wouldn't be required. But if we're looking at very small residential lots that are very tight, those can get very complicated very quickly, and having a concept plan as a first step in review can be very helpful. What the concept plan is, is it's a less detailed site layout, so it gives us our basic setbacks, it gives us our parking, our landscape areas, so we can generally see that the site works and works well before full engineering is designed for a site. Once you do the full engineering of a site, you've already spent quite a bit of time and money on that design, and to go back and make major changes is quite a burden to the applicant. So the concept plan would always be an available step to them should they choose to do that, and it would be required for sites that are greater than five acres. There is, like I said, exceptions in there for if it's a very simple project, very straightforward, and the applicant's comfortable going straight to the full engineering site plan, they can do that, but with the concept plan, they get a level of approval and security with the project before they do spend all the money on the full civil design drawings. And this was a concept that was supported by our outside technical advisory roundtable, which included developers and engineers. So our second goal was to make Lewisville more pedestrian and bike friendly, and so this is an important goal because it promotes equity for all travel modes through provision for pedestrians and bicyclists. It aligns with our adopted complete street policy, which we are currently working on the update to and hope to bring soon. It's also an identified priority from our small area plans and our 2025 plan update. So one of the things that we've done is we've provided some new street cross-sections that support multimodal use and street trees, generally making them more pedestrian friendly. Some of the key changes here is that public utilities have been moved underneath the concrete of the street itself and outside of the parkway so that that parkway can be used for plantings. We did work with fire and engineering and public services and parks on these standards, so there are provisions in place about tree species, about trimming up the tree to a safe and adequate height, and putting in root barriers. But what these right-of-way sections do is allow for our smaller residential developments, which we're seeing more of, to come in and for us to still have a nice streetscape that has street trees on it. You could do a 53-foot right-of-way, which is a little bit wider than our current standard, and have continuous street trees within a six-foot parkway. You could do a 50-foot right-of-way and provide ballbouts with street trees on those ballbouts, and those would both be options. Our current sections really don't allow for any plantings within that right-of-way because the water and sewer lines respectively run in that planting area. We've also put in provisions to shorten block lengths, or where block lengths are not shortened to 800 feet, to break them up with a pedestrian pass-through, so at least you still have walkability in the neighborhood, even if you don't have a full street that separates it into specific blocks. And that does really enhance walkability, as does a soft ban, we're calling it, on cul-de-sacs, and this would also require a pedestrian pass-through at the end of the cul-de-sac through to the next street, and that really helps with walkability. If you're in your car, you can't make it through there, but if you're on foot or on bike, you can still go through those areas. And then we're hoping to connect people better to existing commercial opportunities so that they can make those transit trips on foot or on bike or through other means rather than just in a car. However, we do want these areas to be safe, and so we're also proposing some lighting standards for our pedestrian areas. So with an engineering site plan, they would be required to provide a photometric plan and show that they've got a half a foot candle on the sidewalks and trails that are adjacent to the site. This could be provided through building lighting, if the building's close enough. It could be provided through the parking lot lighting, too, if that's close enough to adequately light the sidewalk. Otherwise, they can add light fixtures that are no taller than 15 feet to ensure that that sidewalk has adequate lighting. However, we don't want light pollution, so we have provisions in there to have shielded full cutoff light fixtures, and we're maintaining the provision that no more than .2-foot candles of spillover lighting hits adjacent residential property, because we don't want to be a nuisance in terms of light to the neighbors. So our third goal is to make Lewisville more green, and so this is to implement the Lewisville 2025 Plan, to be a sustainable and healthier community, to help reduce our energy use, and to improve our air and water quality. And so again, our street trees will help with that. We've also added provisions that show if you're adjacent to a park, we do have a park development ordinance to make sure that parkland is being dedicated, so if that parkland's dedicated, we wanted to clarify how your streets needed to engage it to make sure that it's clear and accessible, to help bring that visual green to our neighborhoods. We've also coordinated with our drainage manual updates. Some of the big changes there are requiring maintenance plans and updated water quality standards referencing I-SWIM, which is the Integrated Storm Water Management that's promoted through North Central Texas Council of Governments. We've given the city engineer flexibility to approve alternative stormwater systems that promote best management. We've given the city engineer flexibility to approve alternative stormwater systems that promote best management practices. And we've reduced the requirements for enclosing stormwater. Our goal here is really to make uh, open, more natural systems more common, rather than necessarily channelizing everything, piping everything. If it doesn't need to be. We've included provisions for electric vehicle ready design, which includes space to install charging stations, the conduit for those spaces. And the electric voltage capacity on the site. To ensure that at least five percent of spaces where parking lots of over a hundred spaces are provided. Have the ability to have electric vehicle charging stations in the future. This doesn't mean they have to put them in right away, it just means that they'd have to design the parking lot such that at least five percent of the sites could have charging stations. In the future. We've updated our tree and shrub list to make sure that we've got only native and adaptive drought tolerant species available. We've been a little bit more flexible in the placement and clustering of trees, so that trees can be planted for maximum long-term health. We've put in a limitation on turf in commercial and multifamily areas to reduce water consumption. It's limited to fifty percent, and the rest of the fifty percent of their landscape strip areas, they can use other ground covers. They could have their shrub rows in a bed kind of configuration. There's other alternatives that they can do that are generally lower water usages. We've added some landscape requirements for common open space lots in new neighborhoods. Most neighborhoods do landscape those and put in some amenities, but we wanted to add some minimum standards since we didn't have anything before. And we've added irrigation system requirements referencing that drip and bubblers are preferred instead of sprayheads, as those will reduce the water loss. And therefore be a little bit more water efficient. We've made some significant changes to our tree preservation ordinance. The challenge with our current ordinance and the type of residential development that we're seeing is that every tree in the right-of-way is exempt. And every tree in the building footprint is exempt, and every tree whose canopy extends into one of those areas is also exempt. And what that means for a lot of single-family neighborhoods is there aren't any protected trees on the site, and so they can all be removed without mitigation. So what we've said is thirty-five percent of the protected inches on the development site must be preserved or mitigated. Um, and that will hopefully encourage developers to design their sites in such a way to create open space areas or to lay out the lots that they can preserve some trees. But at a minimum, they would have to mitigate inches that they're not able to preserve. For multifamily and commercial development, we've reduced the exempt areas. It was currently any of the drive aisles, any of the buildings and any of the easements. We've reduced that just to be the building footprint. To kind of mitigate those changes, what we've done is we've increased the size of what is a protected tree from five inches to eight inches. And that also tracks with state law, and we're also giving them mitigation credits towards preserved trees. Um, rather than as on credits towards their landscaping. So if they preserve a, a ten-inch tree on site, that gives them ten inches of mitigation credit. Um, to be clear, we're still not permitting clearcutting. Um, and we've tried to clarify what the process is to remove trees. So for any site that's really under development, it would be through the engineering process. But we've also added a tree removal permit, so that could be a, a, a currently developed site that just wants to remove a tree for whatever reason. Possibly it's diseased or something like that, there's a more clear process for them to go through. Um, and then we're also adding an underbrush removal permit. And what this is, is it makes it clear to the developer that you're allowed to remove the undergrowth. So that you can get in and survey the site and do the work you need to do. However, you're not allowed to grade and you're not allowed to remove trees, and that's kind of clear on the permit which they've received. So hopefully they have that and they know what their permissions are. Rather than currently where there's no real documentation given or anything like that, it's just that they're allowed to remove the underbrush. There's no real tracking system for that either. So we hope that clarifies tree removal and helps us to hopefully preserve or at least mitigate more of our existing trees. We have added some incentives to preserve the trees as well, which is that we can reduce the parking requirements up to twenty percent on a space per tree basis. Um, and we can also adjust building setbacks administratively at a set staff level up to ten feet if it's preserving an existing tree. We're giving special credit for preserving post-oaks and blackjack oaks, as those trees make up our native cross-timber forest. So if you preserve one of those trees that's eight inches or larger, you actually get a two-to-one mitigation credit. Cause we're really trying to focus mitigation efforts on those trees as they cannot be replanted. Um, in addition, with our parking lot landscaping standards. If you want to provide more than the minimum parking required, you're welcome to do so. But if you go over a, a hundred and ten percent of the minimum parking required. You would have to provide additional landscaping within your parking lot area to offset some of that additional concrete. We really do want to reduce a lot of the concrete that we have in our parking lots. We have areas that are vastly overparked, and I'll get to some of those parking standards in a minute. So another goal was to make.
Can I, can I ask just a quick question? So we're talking about tree mitigation for removal of trees. Are there any cities or municipalities that just say, look, if, if you're getting rid of tree canopy, um, you need to mitigate, period? Um, I, the, I see, I see a lot of trading. That if you do this, you do, you get that. Is there anybody out there that says, if you don't do this? The, the, we're gonna start with, don't do it, not with, do it and you get something.
Yeah, so there are a variety of tree mitigation ordinances that are out there already. Um, I'm not sure of a city that says you just have to mitigate everything that you remove. Um, I can check into that, um, cause I, I can't think of one off the top of my head. Most of them do give some kind of exemptions, either for the building footprint or some kind of uh, mitigation credit for trees that are preserved.
I, and I, and I, I, it's been a while since I've dug into the tree ordinance. What, what I'm hopeful to see is, I don't think we penalize if it's part of the footprint.
Currently, no.
Currently, no. Would, would we with the new system?
The only area we would penalize if it's part of the footprint is possibly a little bit with the single-family developments, where we're saying it's a flat thirty-five percent you have to mitigate. Um, they, they can get some credits, obviously. But there, the issue, like I said, we've been having with single families, basically everything ends up being exempt under our current ordinances.
I'd, I'd like to explore just saying, look, if you take a tree down, it needs to be mitigated regardless of whether it's in the footprint or not. I think that's just a higher standard. It may not be an attainable standard, I don't know, but if, if we could maybe explore that as we go through this, I just. It sure is easier if we can just. I get that it's easier to clearcut and build something, but I, 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 we got some great trees. Um, and just a little bit of creativity on a, on a site plan sometimes can save great trees, and this might be another lever. If, if that's, if that's okay.
No, I think. Could I make a suggestion if you, if you wanna, if you would like to um, pursue that direction? Um, I, I agree that I, I think that we, I've certainly seen tree ordinances. That are a lot more stringent than what we're, uh, that what's currently being proposed. Um, if you want to go more stringent, I would say there are. I, I would, I, I would suggest that we put together a list of protected tree species. And evaluate it based on the species.
Everything but Bradford pear.
So, you know, like, you know, like hackberries are usually, you can take a hackberry tree down without paying a, a mitigation penalty for that. Um, because they're just not very good trees. And so there's, you know, there's a whole, there's a ornamental trees, and there's a whole list of trees that really, um, you know. Don't count towards the mitigation requirement, but if it's an oak or a pecan or some, you know, a quality tree, you could. Yeah, regardless of whether it's in the building footprint or where it's located. Um, I, I would just not, I would say before we just do a blanket, I would prefer to look at it based on the species.
Michelle, can you talk about the species changes we've.
Yeah, and I, I didn't include some of our presentation, but we have made some species changes. Our current ordinance only protects a set list of trees, which is about eight trees. And there's a lot of other good trees that you can find out on sites, especially as we redevelop. So with this revision, what we've done is we've said every tree is protected unless it's one of these species. And the exemptions are um, hackberry, bodark, um, Bradford pears, they're on there. Um, there's one other one that I can't remember, it might be mesquite, did I say mesquite already? Um, but yeah, mesquite, Bradford pear, bodark.
Crape myrtle.
Hackberry. Um, no, we, we didn't uh, include understory trees, it's really just based on getting that eight-inch caliper, which most understory trees aren't really gonna get. Unless they're quite large, um, in which case you might want to protect them anyway.
Well, it sounds like we've got a little bit of direction to, to tweak that, or at least come back with some different options. Thank you, thank you for being flexible to take my question.
Okay, so our, our next goal was to make Lewisville more affordable, and this has really been something that's come out more recently. Um, it wasn't so much an issue when we started the process, but it's become a greater issue as we've gone through it. Um, and this is the need for housing that we've identified in the twenty twenty-five plan update. And we just want to make sure that we have a good quality of life for our residents and that they're not cost burdened by their housing. Um, so what we've proposed, and this was what was proposed at the beginning of the process, was to reduce the minimum dwelling area. For most of our zoning districts with a basic minimum proposed being one thousand square feet. The current minimums are twelve hundred square feet and seventeen hundred square feet. Uh, throughout our zoning districts, it varies quite a bit, we wanted to standardize that a bit at a thousand square feet. And just for reference, um, I found some recently listed homes in Lewisville that were thirteen hundred and a thousand square feet. And they're both being listed in the two hundred and eighty thousand dollar range. So, uh, there's quite expensive housing these days. The other option we wanted to do was to make backyard cottages, often referred to as accessory dwelling units or ADUs. Allowed by right in most of our residential zoning districts, uh, up to the R seven point five zoning district. And then allow an SUP for them in our smaller residential, single-family detached zonings, like the R six and the R five. We wanted a little bit more control over those smaller lots, just to make sure that it was gonna be uh, a good project. That wouldn't be negatively impactful to the neighbors. But we do have standards that a backyard cottage would have to meet, and that's that they'd have to stay within the lot coverage in the base zoning district. The owner would have to live on property somewhere, whether it's in the main home or in the backyard cottage. That the height of the backyard cottage doesn't exceed the height of the principal home. That the area doesn't exceed eight hundred square feet or fifty percent of the person, principal home, whichever is greater. And that's just to make sure that it is subordinate to the principal home. The minimum size we've put in is at four hundred square feet. It does have to be on a permanent foundation, it does have to be located behind the principal building, ten feet away from the principal home and five feet from a lot line. And it does have to have a single dedicated off-street parking space that cannot be tandem with the principal home's required parking spaces. And we're hopeful that those will alleviate concerns that people have and any potential negative impacts that might be associated with the. Uh, slightly increased density you would get with backyard cottages.
Michelle, I have a question on that, so I'm, I'm fully supportive of that. Um, everything you just said, my only question with the, um, so with our. With our UDO, we can, we can define, um, you know, space limitations on the property. And, and you know, what square footage they can build. The requirement that the property has to be owner occupied is something that's gonna be. Um, difficult to enforce and keep track of over time. So how, how do we ensure that, you know, they may, they may, when they build it. They, they may be occupying that home, that they may sell it or rent it out and then have multiple rental units on the property. How do we enforce that that is the case?
Yeah, so, um, it, it would be fairly easy to look up and determine whether the property owner lives on the site or not. Um, that's fairly easy to do, um, you can look at the homestead exemption, you can look at the mailing address, um, through the Dayton Central Appraisal District. Um, the enforcement part, yes, um, that would be a little bit trickier. It would go through our code enforcement process and we'd have to reach out to the property owner and let them know, like, you need to either move back onto the premises. Or potentially sell to someone that is willing to live on the premises. Um, so it, it could be challenging to get that enforcement done, it would probably be a little bit more time consuming than your standard thirty days. If they have leases, you know, we might need to honor those, but um, it can be done. It, it would, like you said, though, probably be a bit challenging for staff.
I, I'm just asking what happens, you know, that they build the unit and then ten years later. Or are, are we, are we keeping track with them and making sure that they're still living there? While they have that, that ADU back there. I mean, oh, you know what I'm saying, so like, over time, we can, we can track it right when they're building it, when they're getting all their permits. But what, once it's done, how do we enforce that over time?
We also do have our uh, single-family rental ordinance, um, and those inspections that are done. Um, so that's another process that we can use to check and enforce it over time.
Okay, excellent.
Another uh, way to make Lewisville more affordable by allowing a little bit of moderate increased density within existing neighborhood. Would be to allow duplexes by rights, um, in some of those smaller zoning districts where we're saying an SUP might be needed. So looking at the R seven-five, R six and R five districts, saying that you can do a duplex, provided that the lot coverage again is met. That the setbacks are met, the minimum dwelling unit size would need to meet the minimum based on the zoning district. So likely with these revisions, one thousand square feet per unit. Um, there would need to be three off-street parking spaces per unit. Um, if it's a conversion, we would say that no additional garage doors should face the street. And there shouldn't be any additional parking spaces between the home and the street. So that garage and those parking spaces for that additional unit need to somehow be located to the rear of the property. Um, and so that would be kind of on a site-by-site uh, case to determine how they would achieve that. Uh, but it would allow for some additions and, and conversions of single-family homes into duplexes to again allow a little bit of a rental property. Uh, which can be useful to the property owner themselves too, especially with the accessory dwelling units. A lot of property owners build those to make it more affordable to stay in their home. So our next goal was to make compatible development easier with flexibility for infill design. Um, and this goal was really uh, based on the fact that we are mostly built out, we want to streamline our processes. Uh, we want to make it easier to revitalize developed parts of Lewisville, and we want to create more opportunities for those close-in living and working uh, type developments. So one of the things that we're looking to do is to increase the width of utility easements from fifteen feet to twenty feet, but eliminate building setbacks. Currently, our ordinance requires a fifteen-foot easement, but depending on whether it's a pressurized or unpressurized line. An additional five to ten-foot setback on either side of that easement. It's a little bit complicated, it's a little bit unusual. Um, and so what we're proposing to do is to just get a singular easement that fits what we need for that line. Um, and not, and eliminate the building setback. And this allows the property owner to build a little bit of a larger structure, because they can use that additional five or ten feet that they've gained. Uh, to actually do building footprint with. Um, in addition, we're looking at allowing the public utility lines to be placed under pavement. That's a variance that this council has seen a number of times. With the condition that we make the property owner responsible for replacement of the pavement, should we have to dig it up. So we're just gonna write that into the code, that you can pave over the, 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 the line, but it is your responsibility to replace it, should we have to dig it up.
Michelle, I'm sorry, I have, help me understand. So if we're moving from a fifteen-foot easement and eliminate the building setbacks. Are, are you talking about, what's the building setback? Is it five feet? Are you talking about side or are you talking about front?
From the easement.
Okay, so it could be on the side.
It could be on the side, yeah, it just depends where.
So if we go from a fifteen-foot plus a five, then that is, but then we go to a twenty, are we, are we gaining any feet there?
So you are, well, on, so if you have a fifteen-foot easement, um, and maybe it splits a lot line.
Okay.
You would gain two and a half feet on either side.
Plus five, okay, so twelve and a half.
So instead of.
Okay.
A fifteen-foot centered on the line with five.
So you get two and a half feet.
You get two and a half.
Okay.
If that's a unpressurized line, on a pressurized line, you might get a little bit more.
Okay, I got you. He's got a graphic for me here. Okay. Okay, I got it, thank you.
Um, and the other change we're making is really to keep in line with what's current best practices in the region. Uh, which is to allow performance bonds, um, upfront, um, instead of a full cash escrow. The way the process currently works is the developer has to put in all the public improvements before they can work on the private improvements. Or if they want to build the public and private together, they can do a full cash escrow for the value of what those public improvements are. They give us a quote from an engineer saying it's gonna cost X amount of dollars to put in this public infrastructure. We collect that money upfront, we hold on to it while the developer spends that same amount of dollars putting in the public infrastructure. At the end of the project, we get it back to them. What we're proposing to do is to allow a performance bond, so instead of giving us all the money upfront, the developer could go to a bonding agency. Um, request a performance bond, pay the bonding agency a small percentage. Um, and then if the city needs to collect the money, we would have to go collect it from the bonding agency. Um, and that is a, a fairly standard practice, and it did also have the support of our technical advisory roundtable. We also wanted to be a bit more flexible with front entry. Um, our current ordinance does prohibit front-entry garages. Our current ordinance does prohibit front-entry garages, but we're proposing on detached homes to allow front or rear entry by right. Townhomes would still require alternative standards for front entry, so they'd have to come before the city council again. But with front-entry garages, if the lot is 40 foot or less, there would be some additional design standards they'd have to meet. The garage couldn't be more than 5 feet in front of the primary home, and it would have to have some kind of ornamentation, windows, or fixtures just to dress it up a little bit and improve the aesthetic from the street. So it's not just a plain garage door that you're seeing, or too much of a snout house as they're referred to. We've looked at our parking standards, and for most uses, we have reduced what the standard is. For example, with a small retail store, they're currently required to park one space per 100 square feet of floor area, which is a very high parking standard for retail. We're taking that to about one per 300 for a small retail store. For example, restaurants in Lewisville currently require 1 and 1/2 parking spaces per 100 square feet of floor area. We're reducing that to one space per 100 square feet of floor area. This is in better alignment with what other cities around us are doing and what parking is actually needed on these sites. We have a lot of sites that have significant amounts of parking that aren't used. And we'd love for those sites to be able to use that land in a more economically efficient way than a concrete parking. We've tried to standardize the parking ratio as much as we can, and this was also done in the I-35 overlay. And the goal there is to allow transition over time as much as possible. We've also added some stacking requirements for drive-through operations. We don't have any on the books today. For the most part, this works out as most drive-throughs are built by chains and they sort of have brand standards. But as we develop and have different mom-and-pop places open up, we want to make sure we have at least a minimum number of stacking so we don't create any issues. To make redevelopment and reoccupancy a space easier, we've allowed up to 10% of any inline lease space to be occupied by restaurants without having to provide parking at the restaurant rate. So at least you could have maybe one of your lease spaces in a shopping center convert to a restaurant and not have to go back in and add additional parking. For the most part, restaurants and other retail uses offset each other in terms of hours of operation, so we don't see any major issues with that. We've also made an allowance that they can do compact car parking for up to 10% of the required parking that's, that needs to be on site. The caveat with that would be that that compact car parking needs to be marked, and it needs to be centralized and together and can't just be scattered throughout the site. We've also allowed additions, up to 10% on existing buildings without requiring additional parking. And I, I didn't say that quite right. We've allowed additions onto buildings. As long as they don't increase the required parking by more than 10%, they don't have to go back and add that parking. So does that make sense, the way I phrase that? If they add an addition to the building and it doesn't increase the needed parking by more than 10%, they can do that without adding the parking.
Michelle? What about like restaurant patio spaces? Does that add to parking requirements?
We do include those in our parking requirements as it's seating area that, that's being occupied.
Okay.
So our last section is to clarify and update our engineering standards. We want to improve our traffic circulation, and we want to leave more creeks and drainage ways in a natural state. So we wanted to standardize our maintenance responsibilities for easements and floodplains. We're putting in a standard for eyebrows on streets that have more than a 45-degree bend within them. Most developments have done this anyway, but we just wanted to have that on the books as it does make maneuvering through those neighborhoods much easier, especially when there's on-street parking. And we've also updated some of our more technical standards that relate to materials and types of public infrastructure equipment that's used. So our next steps moving forward are we're going to finalize changes based on our feedback from legal. We'll send that final text to our code review committee. That's our internal staff team, just for them to make sure that it looks good to them still. We'll also send the final text to our consultant team so that they can do a final proof and begin formatting it. And then we anticipate scheduling public hearings and sending out the notifications for those hearings in the June and July timeframe. So we're, we're getting very close, and I know we're very close to time, but I'm certainly here for any questions or discussion.
Counsel? Based on the silence, you did great.
This is a huge undertaking, so I, I think, I think you have all done a really great job. I'm really excited about, really excited about getting this rewritten and making it much more flexible because I agree that's where we are with our, with us being mostly built out. And so I think this is an excellent step forward, and I think it's going to be so much easier to work with the city of Lewisville and get things built. And I'm, I'm really excited about it, and I thank you so much for every, all the effort you have put in. I know this has been a, a long process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that is all that we have scheduled for the workshop. We've got about five minutes until we start the regular session, so we will close the workshop and we'll reopen in a regular session at 7:00 PM. All right, it is Monday, March 7th at 7:00 PM. We're going to call this regular session of the Lewisville City Council to order, and we do have a quorum. Up first, if we would, Mayor Pro Tem Green will be doing the invocation.
Okay. Please join me for a moment of silent contemplation. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the American and Texas Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
All right, up next, we have the Visitor Citizens Forum. Speakers must address their comments to the mayor rather than to individual council members or staff. Speakers should speak clearly and state their name and address prior to beginning their remarks. Speakers will be allowed five minutes for testimony, and speakers making personal, impertinent, profane, or slanderous remarks may be removed from the meeting. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping of feet, whistles, yells, clapping, and similar demonstrations will not be permitted. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city council is restricted from discussing or taking action on items not listed on the agenda. Action can only be taken at a future meeting. I do have a request to appear before the city council from Ms. Julie Garrison. Ms. Garrison, if you would state your name and address for the record.
My name's Julie Garrison, and my address is 227 Laneyard in Old Town, Lewisville, 75057. And you can hear, everyone can hear me just fine.
If you wouldn't mind maybe taking a couple steps up.
It was someone's laptop, so I didn't want to get too close. All right, thanks for hearing me today. I have two topics I would like to address to the mayor and the council. When I first moved to Lewisville, I was introduced to this app, the Lewisville app. It's a great app. I'm a member of the Citizens University currently that's going on, so I'm learning a lot about the city and the things it can do. I would make one recommendation for the app. The app seems to, once they have delegated the service work, to actually close the ticket. So if you want to follow up with the service work in that particular service work, you have to open up another ticket and reference, you know, the ticket number. And then also, I started thinking that maybe the, the accountability might not be there as well because it makes it look like, hey, we serve these, we closed this service ticket, and it actually hasn't, the work hasn't been done. Case in point, there, there's been a couple. I mean, you can go and look my name up and find all the service tickets that I've opened so far, and it's a great app. There is one in particular where I had a friend fall on the south side of the, the park there in Wayne Ferguson, where there's a step-off. I, on or about the last week of January, I put in the ticket, and it was, it was expeditiously looked at. And on, they said, hey, on February 7th, we have decided we are going to strip it. It will be completed by February 7th. Well, today is March 7th, and it's still not complete. So does it fall off their radar? Not really, you know, showing blame or accusations to anyone, just, just, I would recommend looking at that, saying, hey, we don't close it until action, has been actioned. Either we closed the ticket or we actioned it and we closed it by doing the action. So that would be something I would like the council to look at. The second item is the crosswalk out on Main Street and the safety of that. I'd like to let you know that I have a MBA in logistics. My bachelor's is in political science. I've worked at EPS for 28 years. In the last, the last job that I held for them, I had 65 drivers, a bunch of supervisors. I basically ran the, the smaller DFW terminal for them. And my concern, it's, it's not for the organization as I am retired. However, just from my expertise and my background, I find it very troubling about the crosswalk. I've been to the Old Town Meeting, and I think it was looked at one time where they were going to do back-end parking, which that would be, that would help. Also, I recommended to the traffic department, hey, why don't you make the Charles and Main, the Charles and Main Street light a little longer? To where Charles is, it's, it's on a timer, right? So hey, make it, make it where it's, it's been a while since I've presented. Make it to where, you know, that it backs up so where they're not racing through. Every time I've submitted a request, it's gone to the, the police department. And, you know, it gets, it gets better for a time, but, I mean, they can't, our guys and gals can't be out there 24/7, you know, they have other things to do. So it's really concerning. You press the button and they don't stop. One time, one of the guys stopped for me. I walked out. It was a bulk truck. And my gut told me, Julie, you need to peer around the corner before you step out. And sure enough, I peered, and here comes his car, and he had to really, he lay on his brakes to get, I mean, he stopped. I'm just concerned for the safety of and well-being of our public there. Also, this, the, the financial disposition of Lewisville, if this is a known issue, and it's been brought up and nothing has been done about it, a tier-two accident or tier, no, it's a tier-one accident, a tier-one accident can cost half a million up, depending on what, you know, what it is. So it's not just a financial concern, but it's more importantly, it's a, it's a, a concern for the public and the general well-being. So thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for your observations and input. I'm sure someone from staff will be, be reaching out to you. City Secretary, do we have any other comments for Visitor Citizen Forum? Item D, Consent Agenda. All the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card or e-comment must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. City Secretary, do we have any requests for removal? All right. City Council, entertain a motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Council, if you'd please vote. Consent agenda is approved, 5 to nothing. Item E, Regular Hearing, 11. Consideration of an Ordinance Amending Article 9 Sexually Oriented Business of Chapter 7 of the Lewisville City Code by repealing said article and adopting a new Article 9 sexually oriented, I'm sorry, that's, that's 11. It's my Roman numerals, my apologies. Article 11 and adopting a new Article 11 sexually oriented business. The city has a two-part system for regulating of, regulation of sexually oriented businesses, SOBs, in city limits. Licensing outlining, outlined in Article 11, Chapter 7 of the city code, and distance requirements outlined in the city's, outlined in the city's zoning regulations. Based on the research, study, and report findings concerning adverse secondary effects of SOBs, and to ensure compliance with the most current case law regarding regulation of SOBs, this ordinance updates definitions and regulations throughout the SOB licensing ordinance. In addition, it increases the minimum age for SOB employees to 21 years of age to comply with Texas Senate Bill 315. Provides that the penalty for a violation of the city's SOB licensing ordinance is a Class A misdemeanor as provided for in Chapter 243 of the Texas Local Government Code and requires SOBs to close between the hours of 2:00 AM and 6:00 AM. It is recommended that the city council adopt the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. We can make any adjustments if you would like at this time.
I, I would say with the, we know we're going to be kind of making adjustments on this anyway, so I would just move that we adopt the ordinance as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. City Attorney?
This is an ordinance of the Lewisville City Council amending Article 11 Sexually Oriented Businesses of Chapter 7 of the Lewisville City Code by repealing said article and adopting a new Article 11 Sexually Oriented Businesses of Chapter 7 of the Lewisville City Code, providing a repealer severability, a penalty, and an effective date declaring an emergency.
Counsel, if you'd please vote. Motion passes 5 to nothing. Item F, Reports. Reports about items of community interest regarding which no action will be taken. Councilman Troyer? Would, would you, would you like to be first this week?
Why, certainly I would. Thank you. First of all, I would like to commend the city staff for, for presenting, for conducting our council retreat so efficiently and, and completely over the weekend. I would recommend that if any, any constituents who are interested in seeing all of the work that the city staff has done for the Castle Hills annexation and especially, I'm especially impressed by the business plans that were presented to us. It's just, I'm just continually amazed at the city staff and what they do for us. In terms of reports, I do have some reports from the, from the Lewisville Grand Theater. First of all, in terms of performances coming up, we have the Black Box Songwriter Series with Jason Edie. Will be on March 11th. It's presented by the city of Lewisville. Then we have Texas Tunes with Corey Morrow, also by the city of Lewisville on March 19th. And of course, every Friday evening, 6 to 9, the acoustic jam takes place in the, somewhere in the theater, depending on what else is going on. Activities coming up. Is coming Saturday, March 12th. We have St. Patty's in the Plaza. Come out and wear your green, I guess, and celebrate St. Patrick's Day and Texas Independence. And then we have some art exhibitions going on, big inspiration, small works. Now through March 12th, presented by the Visual Art League of Lewisville. And then there is a middle school art exhibition presented by the LISD going from March 4th through the 19th, and that is my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Troyer. We're going to work our way down the table. Officer, I, I've decided there's a new thing that's going to happen with the PD during council meetings from here on out.
Oh, God.
Thank you for being here.
Nothing to report, Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
No report.
Thank you, ma'am.
No report, Mayor.
No report.
I know there's one here.
Oh, yeah. Lake level report, the current elevation of Lake Lewisville is at 520.29 feet.
Councilmember Green?
I think Councilmember Troyer stole my thunder, so. And it looks like staff is pretty tired from all the effort that they put into the retreat, which I concur with. Councilman Troyer was a very informative retreat. I know I have been exhausted since then, and I was just absorbing for the three days. I can't imagine all the work that, that staff put in to prepare all of that wonderful, enticing material for us to listen to. So I appreciate the hard work, and yeah, nothing else to report.
Okay, well, since we're all on the same page, no, I, I thought the, the retreat was great. I think specifically the business plans, because they helped tie in some ideas of the, the five top, I think it was the top 10 ideas of tying what I, the ideas that I already had in with that. I know the staff is always inundated with, with a bunch of things, so, you know, I wanted to keep it in line with what, what we're already doing because there's a lot, you know, people made mistake. They think that a city is supposed to turn on a dime, but, you know, we're, we're a cruise ship. We're not a speedboat, so. And there are a lot of, they're juggling a lot of things, and I really appreciate their, their effort in, in that. Also, if you've been on my Facebook page, I've been talking about the art wrap traffic signals. You can go to the city website and find out about how local artists, you can get involved and help wrap those signals and make them look like something other than utility boxes. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
I have no report, per se, but I would like to say thank you to Eric and to Texas and Mexico Power, as exhausted as we all were Sunday.
As exhausted as we all were Sunday after the farewell to the water tower going home, there was this line down in the middle of Samuel that could have really caused the problem. Um, with there not being too much response from the numbers that we have, Texas and Mexico Power came out, it wasn't their line, but they helped us get it up there. And I know Eric was exhausted, thank you, Eric, but he stayed there until it was done. And, uh, I just, again, want to say with Texas and Mexico Power, they didn't have to do that. And they may, the police officer and Eric may still be there waiting for a response, but they didn't have to, so that's good.
City Manager?
Uh, I did want to thank council for your attention for a very long retreat. I will say I had a, uh, lunch with a city manager of another city and I told him how long our retreat was and he goes, I can't even get my council members to sit four hours in a room. So, so anyway, we, we may look at, uh, shortening it, uh, a little bit, maybe two days, uh, instead of two and a half days, so we're going to try to work towards that next year, um, and being more succinct. The other thing to, to tell you guys is that on, uh, our next meeting, uh, we will be bringing the priorities back to you because when staff re-looked at them, there was some confusion about what some of them meant and unpacking them. Um, and we certainly didn't want to put words in your mouth and then you guys can formally adopt them. So, uh, you will see that coming back on the twenty-first.
And I just, I've been to over a dozen, maybe close to fifteen retreats now and, and I, uh, am always impressed, you guys are constantly raising the bar every year I go. There's, there's no way they can pack more into my little brain and every year you figure out how to pack more into my little brain. So, I am, um, greatly appreciative. Um, I would highly encourage any residents who are wondering about, uh, the quality of our city, what we do, what we're focused on, um, take some time to, to watch those Youtubes. This was the first year that we actually livestreamed, as, as far as I know. Um, and, and I appreciate the continued commitment to transparency and open government that we have here in Lewisville. Uh, we, uh, we go above and beyond what is required and I think that is incumbent on all of us, so I greatly appreciate that. Um, with that, I think we have some closed session work that we need to.
You've got William.
Oh, that's right, I get, I get to, I get to do the gentleman to my right here. Uh, Councilmember Meredith, if you would please.
I also would like to give, uh, kudos to the staff. I know it's a lot of work putting this thing together. I've done, done events before, I know, just setting this thing up, uh, a lot of good information. I know, you know, tearing us down, Claire kept us fed, um, a lot of sugar. Um, but it was a lot of, lot of great information, really a great way to, um, keep abreast of what's going on in the city. I definitely appreciate that. I mean, it's, it's a lot to have to sit through, but all, all very good, good information. Um, and Mr. Urb, I look forward to seeing if you can get eighteen pages next year.
Yeah, it's, 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 it's humbling when you have sixteen multimillion-dollar operations that you have to review. Um, so I greatly appreciate that. Uh, with that, we're going to move into closed session in accordance with Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, Section five-five-one-point-oh-seven-two, Real Estate Property Acquisition and Section five-five-one-point-oh-eight-seven, Economic Development Deliberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations. We will move into closed session. Counsel, is there any action to be taken?
Nope.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.